I'll call the meeting to order and we'll rise for our national anthem. All right, are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda. Councillor Fredrickson, all in favor? Thank you. Are there any corrections or amendments to the January 6, 2016 regular meeting of council minutes? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adopt the January 6, 2016 regular meeting of council minutes. Councillor Bossett, all in favor? Carry it down. All right, 5.0 is our community spotlight. Today we have Aim for Success on their I Am Mother Daughter conference. Come on down.
Good morning Deputy Mayor and councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you guys this morning. So some of you are aware, we've been quietly working away with some fantastic local partners and some exceptional members of your council for the past few months on a very exciting project. So beauty-related anxiety is a big problem and is recognized as an important issue by women all around the world. In fact, Australian girls say that body image is one of their top three worries in life. One in three six-year-olds in Japan experiences low body confidence. Eighty-one percent of all 10-year-olds in the US are afraid, excuse me, are afraid of being fat. And more than 110,000 girls in Brazil in 2009 underwent cosmetic surgery. When girls hold themselves back because of the way that they think, they look, society misses out. Our own global research shows that six out of 10 girls are so concerned at the way that they look, they avoid participating in a range of activities. Studies in Finland, China, and the US show us that a girl's relationship with the way that they look has a direct impact on their academic performance. So girls who think they're overweight, regardless of their actual weight, have lower grades. And the negative impact of low body confidence continues later in life. Seventeen percent of women claiming that they won't go to a job interview. And eight percent missing workdays when they feel bad about the way they look. We believe that beauty should be a source of confidence, not anxiety. We want to see a world free of appearance-related anxiety so that girls can grow up to be confident, strong, and active members of society. So in celebration of International Women's Day 2016, Aim for Success, along with local partners, is delivering the first annual I Am Empowered Women's Conference. Building on the success from the 2010 DAF Self Esteem Workshop, the conference will provide opportunities for mothers, daughters, caregivers, and mentors to explore social and emotional issues together and will form closer, stronger, and more supportive bonds. Through workshops, guest speakers, activities, and projects, women aged 10 and up will have the opportunity to explore perceptions around self-esteem, body image, self-confidence, and throughout the day will be empowered with tools to help them develop emotionally unstrong. This conference is focused on reshaping girls' and women's perceptions of themselves and in turn helping them to rediscover what real beauty is. Together, mothers, daughters, caregivers, and mentors will build a stronger, more resilient, and more self-confident community. So with that being said, on March 5, which is I guess only about six and a half weeks away, we are really excited to announce that we'll be the first conference that will be occurring at the new CET Center. And we are also excited to announce that, for those that are not familiar, Molly Burke will be flying in to be our keynote speaker. Molly's spoken at all the international weekdays, both in Canada, the US, and also over in Europe. And Molly has a fantastic story of her overcoming both bullying-related issues in school and mental illness. She contracted a disease when, in a very young age, which led to her becoming completely blind by the age of eight years old. And through that condition, she had to overcome a lot of personal, mental health and mental illness-related conditions. And from that, she's really kind of found her own passion in empowering young people and helping to give hope to people to overcome their own challenges. So she'll be joining as our keynote speaker for the day. We also are really excited to, we've done it a little bit differently this year. We did a call-out for workshops where we asked people to come and share their passions, share their hobbies, share areas that they're trained and confident in, and come and share them with our local mums, with our local daughters, and with local mentors. And today was a cutoff day, and even before we've got to today, we have so far have over 15 workshop submissions from all across the country, as far afield as California and all across most of the western provinces. So we're really excited that this has grabbed really the passion of at least half of Canada and all the way down to the States. And I feel excited to be able to put Drayton Valley back on the map to be a town that really does believe in the value and the role of women in our society. And I guess with that being said, I'm also going to go out there and also ask Deputy Mayor if you would consider allowing a very important individual, which as a team, we're incredibly grateful to have Nicole do work with us on this project, but not only this project, but she's been invaluable on previous projects in the 2010 DAF Self Esteem Workshop that we delivered. She's been incredible both in and outside the community, being a huge advocate for women, both in politics and also in the community. She's a great mum, and she's really somebody that's looked up to within the community by all individuals of society. And we'd really be honored if you would allow her to represent town council and to be someone that could speak at our conference and introduce some of our sessions. So yes, I guess we'd now like to kind of open it up for any questions or comments that maybe any of the councillors might have for our team.
Councillor Fredrickson?
Hey, Mr. Lees. I was just wondering, and you may have said this, number of participants, spots available for people for this conference?
So we're having 200 tickets printed. We can actually, we can hold substantially more than that. We're planning for 200, catering for 200, but I guess we can, we will just see how it goes. Yeah, 200.
Okay, and just two more questions. Costs associated with the tickets as well as age of the attendees?
That's a really good question. So what we've really tried to do is really set the cost to be affordable to individuals. So for the whole cost of the day, including registrations, all the workshops, the activities, and lunches included, we've set the cost of $30. With that being said, we already have had people come forward, members of the community and local businesses, that have come forward specifically to say, "We would like to sponsor tickets." So we already, before we've even started to sell tickets, we have a number of tickets that have been set on one side for individuals where that fee is an issue, because we want to ensure that everyone can make it and that that fee never stands in the way of individuals participating. The tickets will go on sale next Wednesday at Value Drug Mart. And the second question was around age. So the age basically is open to all daughters from the age of 10 to 100 years old. So yeah, we basically, we are really trying to gear this for grade six and up, because a lot of the, we have some phenomenal workshops, and some workshops that regularly you're paying in excess of $300 to attend. And there's a real vast majority of every workshop out there, from color personality workshops, we actually have a local country western singer that's coming to do a vocal performance, mother-daughter workshop. We really have a vast array. It's incredibly exciting to see some of our local talented mums and women from across our province, from BC, from Saskatchewan, Manitoba, come forward to want to come to Drayton Valley and share their talents, to share their passions with local individuals.
Councillor Bossett?
Good morning, everyone. So good to see you here this morning. I have to say, I'm very excited to see this conference developing the way that it is. I've been watching it unfold a little bit, and I am the mom of two daughters, now young adult women, but I know 10 years ago, a conference like this probably would have had a great impact on my daughters, particularly one of them. And we don't, we can't see the future, we don't know exactly what will happen at this conference, but my bet is that the lives of young women and their moms are going to be impacted in a very positive way. And I really look forward to hearing stories and testimonials after the conference of the tidbits and the events that happened during that day that are going to stick in the hearts and the minds of these young ladies. So I really commend you for the initiative to put this together, and I think that Councillor Nicole will be an amazing ambassador on behalf of the town of Drayton Valley. She always is and always will be. So I wish you the best of luck, and perhaps one day I'll gear my budgeting workshop to an age range where a 10-year-old could maybe grasp some of it, but I look forward to seeing the results of this hard work. So thank you very much for your initiative.
Councillor Fredrickson?
I guess just to maybe quickly clarify, it is open to men too, so this is not certainly an exclusive mothers-only. We also want to honor the role of men and the role that men play in daughters' lives. So if there's certainly, you know, and I know in our 2010 DAF Self Esteem, we had a number of fathers come with their daughters, and we certainly, that is welcome as well. And we've certainly been talking to like-minded fathers in our community and business owners to let them know that that still is the case, that we value men's role in women's lives equally. We want to make sure that that invite is open to everybody.
We've talked to grandmothers and aunts and mentors, everybody, right? I was talking to my daughter on the way in this morning, and she's, "Oh, I want to go," but of course, because I'm working, I can't go with a mother with them. It's, "Why don't you take grandma?" You know, so they might, they might take grandma, you know? I think it'd be awesome to see a bunch of different generations there, instead of just one specific group of younger children. I'd love to see older daughters there as well. I think it'd be amazing to see a huge range of them.
And equally for your mother without daughters, like my wife, she's adopting a daughter for the day. And I was at Serenity yesterday talking to one of the employees there, and she's the same, she has three sons, and she's like, "I really want to come." She said, "But I don't have a daughter, can I still come?" I'm like, "Yes, because it's open to daughters and all women are daughters." So it really, it's not meant to be exclusive, it's meant to be inclusive. We really want to encourage everybody to come and ensure that everybody within our community is honored that day and in their roles, you know?
That sounds wonderful. I think everyone's excited, and yeah, we definitely will be happy to have our councillor support you guys. So Nicole?
I just want to say it's been a real pleasure to participate. I worked with Sue for the last one as well in 2010, and it was so well-attended and so well-thought-of in the community, and I'm so glad that we're able to put it on again in the same, in a different capacity. This is kind of a different way to go about it, and like you said, it is more inclusive. And I'm very excited. I think you guys have worked phenomenally hard, and Lola and all her help with FCSS as well, and we've had great community volunteers attend and help in the planning committee. And I'm excited for you guys to be the first one in CETC, which I'm sure will be interesting in itself, which we've already been warned it will be, but I'm really honored to participate. This is something I feel very strongly about, and I'm so glad to see of like-minded people in the community that celebrate young girls and their potential, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Moving on to 6.0 is our delegations. So first we have Sunrise Village and Glenna Martell. Good morning.
Good morning. First, I'd like to say thank you for taking the time to hear me out today. I really appreciate it, and I would like to introduce myself again. I'm Glenna Martell. I'm the general manager of Sunrise Village in Drayton Valley. Some of our staff came with us today to show support. This is Jocelyn Zimrilli, she is our activities coordinator, and Janet Cormier, she is our dietary food supervisor. We came to introduce to you our Respite program that initially opened November 19 of this year. It's the only kind, it's the only program of its kind in Drayton Valley. It offers a variety of services, including all meals, bathing assistance, medication assistance, portering, and many more services. We have served many Drayton Valley residents and residents of the surrounding area. Many of our residents return on a regular basis for Respite care for various reasons. This may include a family member going on holidays and a loved one needs care, or an individual recovering from illness that have care requirements, or even individuals that would like to experience our facility upon deciding whether they are moving in permanently. Everyone has a unique and individualized care plan that is drawn up for their specific needs. At Sunrise Village, we provide 24-hour-a-day care, nutritious meals, activities, movies, outside entertainment such as singers, guitar players, ministries, karaoke, and many, many more activities. The staff are very dedicated and interactive. Sunrise Village is like a very large family. I do truly believe in our program, especially when I see the peace of mind it gives family members when they can't be there, if they need to go away for holidays for any reason and they can't bring their loved one. Another issue I would like to address is our transportation in the town of Drayton Valley. Caribou Mirror closed down January 1 of this year, and there are so many individuals that counted on this service and now have no transportation at all. Drayton Valley needs a proper mode of transportation for mobility-challenged individuals. There are several senior facilities in Drayton Valley, not just Sunrise Village, that have residents confined to wheelchairs. There are residents that still live in their homes that also need this service. As we know, with the baby boomers, this situation is only going to increase by 50% to 70% in the next several years. There are so many residents that don't have family to assist them. Some families living far away, and some family members just aren't physically strong enough to transfer their loved ones. Personally, I am very fortunate to be in, to not be in this situation, but I have tried to even just imagine what it would be like to be. And I don't know how a person, what a person is to do if they are really ill and need to see a doctor and can't afford the $700-plus for an ambulance to and from the hospital. Our taxis are not equipped for this service in this town, nor are they trained for it. Is this what is going to happen in our town? Are ambulances are going to turn into a taxi service for those that can afford it? For the people that need an ambulance for emergency, what will happen to them? Will the paramedics be too late? And when we have the people that just can't afford an ambulance, do they suffer? Remember, these people I'm talking about are our family members, our friends, our neighbors, and you and me eventually. I'm hoping we can figure out a solution, and hoping you will assist us in trying to find a solution. I don't know where to go with this, and I'm hoping for input from anybody that will be willing to give us input to find out where to go. And that's about all I have. I'd like to thank you all for your time and for hearing me out. Sorry I spoke very quickly, I get very nervous.
You did just fine, thank you. We appreciate you coming, and I know the mayor went to your opening on your, for the Respite program, and yeah, I was very excited and grateful that there is a program like that in Drayton. Some people don't need Respite care and may not understand that that's where, if you are taking care of someone, sometimes you need a break. You can't do it all the time, no matter if you're going on vacation or just staying home, and I think it's very important that we have that opportunity for people in the community.
Absolutely.
So yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe Annette has a comment?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. I just wanted to let you know that our community services department did put together an initial meeting with community groups just last week
Okay.
to address what needs to happen with specialized transportation.
That's wonderful.
We had a great attendance, and we asked at the end of the meeting, we said, "Who else needs to be at the table?", and they said Sunrise Village.
Excellent.
You will be getting an invitation to the next meeting, and we are looking at sort of the community-based solutions to how to deal with transportation for those with mobility issues.
That's wonderful, thank you so much.
You're quite welcome.
Does the council have any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll just give you these brochures if that's okay.
You bet, come on up. Yeah, thanks for coming. All right, 6.2 is our Healthy Communities Coalition. Is there someone here to speak for Healthy Communities? No, we'll just see if they come later, that's fine. We will move up to 6.3, which is Sergeant Malcolm Callahue, and I don't see him here yet either. We're super on time today. So Tom Thompson, if you want to come up and do your emergency services, that would be great.
Good morning Deputy Mayor, Council. My apologies for doing this a little bit sooner than the normal. I'm scheduled for an emergency services course that I have to go to right away, so I appreciate the opportunity to do this. So if I can direct the council's attention to the pages for, on page 27 of 37 of your package, and the fire department stats, I'll just take some time to go through each area, and if the council has any questions, feel free. So first, first one for the month of November. As you can see, we responded to 24 incidents, three of them being fires, which involved a storage shed, a semi-trailer, as well as a dumpster. So a few serious incidents that we had for fires. In regards to grass fires, we had two grass fires. We are starting to have a bit of an issue with someone lighting fires underneath the new North Saskatchewan Bridge, which is a bit of a concern for us. Not so much that it will damage or destroy the bridge, but just access to that area is difficult. And we've, over the last couple of months, we've had several incidents where people have been lighting fires in that area. We also had eight motor vehicle collisions, which included five single-vehicle rollovers, one of which was a serious incident where the individual suffered severe facial injuries. We had three two-vehicle motor vehicle collisions, which all resulted in minor injuries. In regards to rescues, a good news story, we were called by a concerned citizen for a dog that had wandered out on the Pembina River ice and had fallen through and was trapped out on the ice. So being the catch-all for all emergencies, the fire department responded out, and we successfully retrieved the animal and were able to return it back to its owner, who were very pleased and very excited that they got their dog back, because there was some close calls where we thought the animal was going to be lost, but that was a good story for everybody. In regards to alarm calls, we responded to six alarm calls of all varying kinds. One was an apartment alarm, we had several from local businesses, one was a residential alarm, and one was an alarm at a church. When we're talking about alarms, I just want to clarify, they're not always all false alarms. We get alarms for all different reasons. Could be a carbon monoxide leak, could be a faulty detector, could be a whole wide variety of things. So when we talk about alarms, it's not necessarily always false alarms, which sometimes people seem to think. In regards to miscellaneous calls, we responded to four miscellaneous calls. In terms of miscellaneous, this is kind of the catch-all area for all of the calls that don't fit in the standard categories. Three of them were medical calls, and those three all required lifesaving treatment to save individuals' lives, so that would be things like CPR, or giving AR, or what have you. We also were called to a flare stack that some folks had thought was a large fire in the trees. So that gave us a total of 24 for the month of November. Moving on into December, for December, we weren't quite as busy. We responded to 20 calls in the month of December, one of them being a fire, which was a mobile home that was lost in the Buck Creek area. Surprisingly enough, we responded to three grass fires in the middle of December, which is kind of an odd thing, but it just indicates that we do have a shortage of moisture in the area. We haven't had as much snow as we normally get, so consequently, we're responding to these types of incidents. We had two motor vehicle collisions, one was a vehicle versus a deer, the other one was a two-vehicle collision. Fortunately, all were minor injuries. Again, we responded to 10 alarm calls, six being business alarms, four of them residential. Two of those residential involved cooking incidents, where folks left stuff on the stove and consequently had a bit of a mess to clean up afterwards. And again, we responded to four miscellaneous calls. One was a carbon monoxide leak, one was another cardiac arrest. We also assisted the RCMP with a suicide, and another flare stack incident, which brought us to a total of 20 calls for the month of December. Moving on to the stats for the year-end for 2015, and if I can, on page 31, if I can just, there's a few minor corrections, if I may. In regards to rescue calls, the number of rescue calls should be six, and the number of miscellaneous calls should be 65. When our folks are entering these things into the system, sometimes they don't quite get it under the right category. If you move down to town of Drayton Valley, rescue calls should be two, alarm calls should be 77. And then on page 32, alarm calls should be 37, and miscellaneous should be 33. So my apologies, when I was going through them again, I wanted to make sure that we had those accurate. So just to review these quickly with council, we responded to a total of 322 calls for the month of, for the year 2015. Again, every year, our call volume gets higher and higher. Just to break those down briefly for you, fire calls, we responded to several structure fires, 21 structure fires, with 12 of those being residents. Now, that might sound alarming, however, back in 2010, when we were going through the stats, we were over 45 residential fires in that time. Consequently, is was the reason why we started our chimney sweep program. So the fact that we now have 12 residentials, and out of those, only two of them were actual chimney fires, so we have significantly reduced the number of residential fires in our area, which is a good news story, even though having 10 is still too many, but we have reduced that. We also responded to 11 vehicle fires. Vehicle fires tend to be on the rise when we have a slowdown in the economy and people are losing their jobs. It's similar to the RCMP. RCMP tend to see an increase in vehicle thefts. We tend to see an increase in vehicle fires, so it's the, kind of one of those things that happens. We also responded to two RV fires, as well as eight miscellaneous fires, which include power poles, transformers, dumpsters, all the ones that don't fit in the other neat categories. Motor vehicle collisions, we responded to 55. And I'll remind council, these are the more serious ones. The fender benders that happen in parking lots or on the street are not ones that we respond to. These are the ones where there could be entrapments, or there could be serious injuries to individuals. 31 of those were single-vehicle collisions or rollovers. 17 involved two vehicles. Three of them were three, one was a six. Three of them were three, one was a six-vehicle collision. The one that really stands out and concerns me is the, we had, we responded to two-vehicle versus pedestrian collisions. That's a stat that concerns me and it doesn't seem to be changing at all. Last year, we responded to a similar number. So just to remind the public to be aware when they are crossing the street that sometimes drivers are not paying attention or not watching what's going on. We also had one vehicle versus an animal collision. In regards to the rescue calls, we responded to six calls, three of which involved water rescue operations. And if Council remembers back a bit, we talked about a service delivery program, one of the ones that was high on the priority was water rescue. And out of those six, three of them involved water rescue situations. We also had a bike collision, which was at the DV one hundred, which we responded to. The individuals involved, we had some serious injuries in regards to that situation. Again, the dog in the Pembina as well. We also do our public service and we rescued a cat out of a tree, a little kitten. The funny, the funny one that everybody laughs about, a cat in a tree. And the old saying goes, why do you go to these calls and why do you rescue a cat out of a tree? Has anybody seen a skeleton of a cat in a tree? Well, no. And usually, cats do get down on their own. However, the distraught pet owner and the little girl that was there was very upset and very pleased that we got our cat down. So that's why we do these things.
Thank you.
In regards to alarm calls, we responded to a hundred and fourteen. And again, as I mentioned, these are not all false alarms. They include such things as carbon monoxide alarms, cooking issues, faulty detectors, and yes, of course, we also have our false alarms that fall into that. We are working very hard to find people for their false alarms if there is a no-fault, if there is a false situation. So we're working diligently to curb that type of activity. And the last one, miscellaneous calls, we responded to sixty-five. Twenty-four of those involved medical assist calls, which includes cardiac arrests, lift and assists, overdose calls, those types of issues. We are finding that we are responding to more serious incidents all the time. And as Council is aware, we have met several times with Alberta Health Services to correct our situation with our EMS being in our town limits. As Council is aware, we did approach them with a project to have a paramedic EMT car that just stayed in town. Unfortunately, with the economy in the toilet the way it is right now, they said there's no funding available for anything like that. However, they have changed their thinking a little bit and I truly believe they do recognize there is a serious issue in the rural areas. Alberta Health Services has moved forward with some grant opportunities to provide fire departments with free equipment and free training to assist in EMS response. Is that a fix for the problem? No, by no means is that a fix for the problem, but at least they are now recognizing that there is an issue and so they are taking baby steps to help hopefully correct the problem. So we'll continue to work with that and monitor that as we move forward. In regards to other miscellaneous calls, the RCMP called us several times to do different activities for them, which includes helping them with suicide situations, which are not fun for anybody. We also assist them with forcible entry-type situations where they need to gain access into a structure or they need to gain access into things like safes and whatnot. So we assist them with that. We also assist them with vehicle recovery. If there's a vehicle in the river, obviously, they don't have the equipment or the manpower that can go into the river and can look to make sure there's nobody in there, so they call on us to assist them with that. We've done nine Stars landings this past year, so it gives you an idea that Stars is coming to our community an awful lot, not only in the ones that we deal with, but as well as going to other parts of our county as well. We also had a few other incidents, which include smoke or odor complaints, power lines down, flare stacks, and those types of things, which all fall in the miscellaneous category. And that brings us to our total. Is there any questions from Council?
Thank you. Councilor Fredrickson?
Chief Thompson, you had said that the total lines are up from 2014, is that correct?
Sorry, the what?
The total call lines is up?
Yes.
Is there any one particular area that seems to have a spike compared to what we saw in 2014?
The area which spiked this year was grass fires. That was our increase primarily. We also had an increase in miscellaneous calls. Our EMS call volume is continuing to rise, which is the two areas which were increased.
Thank you. Anything else? I think that sounds good. We're glad that you're out there doing all your prevention and saving the cat, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think our one delegation is on their way, but we'll just move ahead and if they come, we'll slot them back in. So we'll be moving on to public time. I know we have Tyler, we'd like to come down and say something.
Wow, there's a lot more people than we usually have. That's absolutely lovely. Just to give Council a illustration of frame of reference this weekend, Councilor Adelman and I were at the Lynn Berry Bucket. I said that right this time. This time, I didn't get that right. We were able to be able to be part of the public speaking judging this weekend and if I could get Molly and Abby to come on up. This cake is amazing. These lovely ladies gave a presentation on how to be able to make the perfect cake and I'll tell you right now, I had two pieces of cake and it was amazing. And they were master negotiators to be able to raise some funds for the 4-H Club, which is a huge, huge and very important part of our community as well as in the surrounding county. And they were able to negotiate me up to about $6,000, $7,000. Was that? But we did have a cake and we are presenting it to Council, so I hope you enjoy it as much as we do. And if we get a picture with Council and with the lovely ladies here, that would be great.
Wow. Does anyone have any questions before we take our picture? Comments? Councilor Fredrickson?
Do you have any secret baking steps that you'd taken to make the perfect cake?
I use awesome baking.
Councilor Nedo?
I had a real pleasure. It was a lot of fun. You guys were excellent. I wish I was as fearless at your age. I still get nervous public speaking. You guys did a wonderful job and they won in their category. They got first place, just so you know.
Anyone else? Yeah, I think congratulations. That's wonderful. It is great to see young people up and speaking. It's not really that scary, is it? Exactly.
Can we just get a quick picture with Council and the lovely ladies? Yeah. Get the lovely Abby and the boys in the middle and get the Council.
Your picture is number.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, well, seeing as our other delegations are not here, oh. Sure?
I got a note they're on their way, but I.
So I'm getting this from Facebook, actually. I am part of the Healthy Community Coalition, although I am not part of this committee. Noah, who was the delegation for today travels from Pinoka, so I'm just hoping that everything is okay. I'm not getting anybody on Facebook either. Anyways, the reason why.
Just one sec, Lola, sorry.
Oh, okay, so he's not coming?
But he's okay.
That's good to know. Okay, the reason why that delegation was coming into it was to announce the first-ever Workplace Wellness Conference, which is scheduled for March the seventh at the Mackenzie Conference Center from eight-thirty until four. Oh, there's, he did some stuff, that's good. The Healthy Community Coalition First Workplace Wellness Conference targets employees and employers and helps them to develop awareness, skills, and connection with service providers for the creation of supportive work environments specifically regarding mental health, domestic violence, and substance abuse. Tickets are on sale on Eventbrite, which is www eventbrite.ca. Tickets are, let me get to this, early bird tickets until January thirty-first are $50 per person. General admission until February twenty-ninth is $75 per person. Businesses can purchase a table as well for $500, lunches included. And there is a keynote speaker. I don't know hockey, but does anybody know Clint Malarchak? Is there any hockey fans in the room? He's an NHL player.
No, but I'm sure it's very exciting.
Do you know him, Randy?
They had talked about this, he was a belt, he was an NHL player that.
Sorry, sustained a really incredibly hard hit or some sort of big injury, skate across his throat. That's what it is. And he had, and he talks a lot about, you know, dealing with that, seeing the upset in his career and that kind of stuff and how that relates to mental health.
Sounds good.
So it's an interesting speaker for hockey fans and.
Yeah, and I think they chose someone like that because, as mentioned, the target is employers and employees. So our hope is that lots of employers do come to the conference, do learn. Oh, and Jessica's here. Are you here for the Healthy Community Coalition? Come on up. Okay, come on up. I was just trying to fill in the gaps, but now that you are here, I will let you take it away.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate having that responsibility. My apologies to Council for the confusion. Unfortunately, Noah was supposed to be here to present to you today, but he's unable to be here. He called me like two minutes ago. So I will do my very best. I don't know where Lola left off, having just walked in. Oh, okay. So did you talk about structure?
No.
No, okay. So our mental health, our Workplace Wellness Conference is focusing on three primary topic areas: domestic violence, substance use and abuse, and of course, mental health. So those three areas, we feel that our community needs more awareness about, how they can address those needs in their workplace environment, how they can create supportive cultures, which definitely falls in line with social development plan, and offering trainings within the community. We are working very hard through Healthy Communities Coalition to offer more training such as assist, mental health in the workplace, first aid, those type of things, so that they need to know that those are out there and how to access those services. So that's what we're hoping that the conference will do, is that it will help people know what we have available to them, how to access it, and how these important topics are part of a workplace environment and why they need to be everyone's business and how we can address them and decrease stigma around the certain, such as substance abuse and mental health. So we have, I'm sorry, I'm short of breath because I'm all flustered, so one second. You know, because I have a problem with public speaking. Some of our presenters include Morelle Chappell, the Alberta Council of Women's Shelters, Alberta Health Services, Wildrose School Division, and Men at Risk through our Addiction Services. So we have multiple presentations from multiple credible services and providers. And so what we've asked for the town to do is help us by providing, we filled out an event request form to help us with the venue cost. With the economy the way it is, we know that we probably won't reach a lot of donations. We are a little concerned about ticket prices as well, although they are starting to sell. And so we just need help with the venue. Considering that Healthy Communities Coalition has only been around for about a year and a half in a full functioning capacity, we haven't really developed a financial basis for our group at this time. We are working towards that. We're actually having some stuff coming up in the spring regarding how we're going to become a nonprofit group. At this point in time, we just aren't really quite established, so we could use some support to make this happen for our community. So I hope Council will consider our proposal when it comes through. And I just realized, I didn't tell you about our keynote, so that might be really important. Okay? The keynote is Clint Malarchak and he was a former NHL goalie. I don't know if you remember, he was a gentleman who unfortunately was hit by a skate when he was goaltending and had the horrible neck injury. So he actually is a mental health advocate. He has suffered with depression throughout his entire life. He actually had suicidal attempts in the past and he is now a mental health advocate and public speaker. And so he's coming to us to share his story and talk about a high-stress environment to work in, in the NHL. So I'm sure he'll have a lot of, to our community, we feel like he'd be a very good speaker to have come and talk to our population. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Any questions from Council?
Councilor Fossart?
Good morning. Thank you for flying on down. Jessica, take a breath. I'm also excited about this workshop that's coming forward. A lot of work has gone into the planning and I think it'll be very poignant or useful at this time in our community. I'm wondering, who is your target audience? Is it professionals? Is it general public? Is it anybody and everybody who's interested?
It's very open because we feel these topics definitely cross over into all borders. So we haven't delegated it just to professionals. We haven't, it's employers, employees, and just people who want to know. So we've even targeted like families of workers, especially when it comes to things such as suicide and stuff, how to, you know, address those issues. So it's open to anyone in the public, although we're calling it workplace, we definitely will accept anybody.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Councilor Fredrickson?
Just being on the Healthy Communities Coalition, I'm very excited to see how this event has come together. And there is, just like Jessica had said, there is a need, not just to address workplace, but definitely to address those ripple effects of how that workplace environment affects family household environments and trickle on down from there. So I'm excited to see this event come together and I'm excited to hear that there are tickets being sold. And I think this would be a great launching place to have that conversation with our work environment in Drayton Valley. It is, it's very fast-paced, it's super-high stress. It does pull people from their families a lot of the time and there does need to be that need for that conversation.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having me.
And time.
A surprise.
We have Sergeant Malcolm Callahue here with the RCMP stats for December.
So before, I'll get this up a little higher here. Before I begin, just want to apologize for my tardiness. I was double-booked today and I had it all right here in my thing and then from there it just kind of messed up. That's why I'm not in uniform today either, so I do appreciate your understanding and I apologize very much so. Just going into our stats for December, if you go to the first page, you have your January to December statistics. Just want to point out a few things that I've noticed that were some improvements with regards to, first of all, if you look at our assault counts from last year where we had our one-hundred-and-fifty, we're now down to one-hundred-and-ten, which is good news that way. So that's, obviously, one-hundred-and-ten is still not good news, but comparatively to last year, I'd say that's a step forward in that area. in that area. Same thing with our criminal harassment. We've tried to make some work towards educating the victims of criminal harassment to report more when it happens, as of last year as well. I think that sometimes we see some, more on the frequent flyer side sometimes with some people because of, again, related to domestic situations, that type of thing, so I think because of that, we're seeing more enforcement and actually more charges being laid rather than just calls without any sort of ability to charge. We're seeing the numbers drop as a result, because we're seeing them go through the court process, so that's a good thing. Our break-in enters, unfortunately, are the same as last year, which is kind of vexing, and I'll kind of go through that because, and I'll get to that on the last page as well, because there's an indication of an issue with the business break-in enters, but I'll get to that in a minute. Theft of motor vehicles is down from 93 to 70, so that's some good news that way, too. The only other thing that I wanted to point out was with regard to the false alarms, we're up five calls this year to 320. It's almost a call a year. We're really trying to use the false alarm bylaw to try and bring that down, but like I've said, I think repeatedly, the issues with the alarm companies calling the, calling us before they call the key holder makes it very difficult for us to kind of battle that, so we've been trying to contact some of the companies directly to hopefully try and work that out. Yeah, it's still, it's an uphill battle, so we're just trying to work through that. If you move to, it's the one with the blue header, again, a statistical comparison for December 2011 to 2015. Again, it follows the same lines basically of where we stand with regards to assaults. We're down this month, this past month in December from 11 to 9. Criminal harassment is down one call, and the only thing is, again, we saw a slight increase in the theft of motor vehicles this month. That's, we attribute to a traveling criminal group in December, that's coming in and out. We've recovered vehicles in Sherwood Park as a result, the ones that were stolen from here, Sherwood Park, Edmonton, out in Branton area, so we have some idea who's involved with that, we're still following up on some of those. So I just wanted to touch on real briefly here, on the last page, there's two issues that came up with regards to the break-in enters into the businesses and then disposal abuse. Now, I'll preface this again with the fact that these numbers are the raw data that comes through. So a lot of times when you see this number, it says issue, so when I drilled down to it, of the 39 business ones that we had, we were able to successfully lay charges in five of those incidents. Twenty-four of those remained unsolved, two are still under investigation, so from last month, and there was eight that were unfounded, so by that, they were reported as a break-in enter, and then they were found that it wasn't actually the case after all. So, and you see that there's eight that were unfounded, you take that away from the overall, it actually drops us down one from last year. So I guess the thing of it is, is that the numbers that are sometimes reflected here aren't always what is actually the actuality, and the same goes for the disposal assault line. When I drilled down into those, about three of those were cleared otherwise, so that the complainants didn't want to go through with charges, and we didn't have enough evidence to proceed, and there's about five of them that were unfounded in the fact that they weren't actually assaults in the first place. So again, you look at that on the overall picture, and it does create a different picture on the stats themselves. So with that, I'm pretty much open to questions, if there's anything that anyone has.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Long?
Thank you, just very briefly, obviously the economy is a little different now than it was two years ago, is that having an impact on the way you're seeing things?
You know what, overall, and I'm going to use a global picture when I say this for the entire detachment area, yeah, we've seen an increase in property crime, we've seen an increase in just overall busyness in detachment. From when I started last year in November to now, I can tell you, well, not last year, but 2014, I can tell you that there has been a marked increase in our workload, and it's being felt by the membership. It also makes us have to kind of decide where our priorities are going to lie, and that's something I'm going to have to cover with all town council when it comes time for our next annual performance plan. So there's a few things, and I'll touch on one in particular that I've noticed. I'm going to go back to page, sorry, I know they're not numbered, so let me just go with, I think it's the third page, it shows the five-year traffic summary. The January to December impaired operation numbers. Now, there was a time when Mayor McLean asked me whether or not the numbers were declining because people were getting the hint. I didn't agree with that assessment at the time, and I think partially part of that comes down to, if you look at our enforcement numbers from 2011 where we had 65 incidents, now it's 24. I think that's a direct reflection on the busyness of our office and how we have to deal with the service calls, and then the proactive stuff like the impaired driving kind of sometimes takes a bit of a backseat. Sometimes it's not saying that we don't feel it's important, but the fact is, is that we have to allocate our resources to where the calls are. One of the things that I wanted to bring up this year was a refocus on impaired driving. By that, making it part of our annual performance plan as something that I think we need to refocus on. The times where the bars are at the close and going and checking on people, running more check stops, being visible in the community that way. So that's one aspect that I'm looking at right now to bring forward, and I think probably at a GMP meeting, I'll try and schedule something in to sit more and talk more closely about that stuff. But in the meantime, I'm getting off track. So with that, is there anything else here that has any questions?
Nope, I think that's great, thank you.
And again, I do apologize to the poll double-booking, I think that Tom actually took off to the training I was just at, so I'm going to head back there now, but again, appreciate your understanding.
We appreciate you coming, thank you.
Take care.
All right, we have three, oh, public time, public time first. So, 7.0, is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak to us? Nope. All right. Does anyone need a break before we move into decision items, or you guys are okay? Need a break? Sure. We will call an 11-minute break, and then we will be back. Please feel free to join us for muffins and coffee in the back. And cake, yeah. With our, are you okay? Starting off with our decision items, we have 8.1 is Counselor Bossert, Town of Drayton Valley and District FCSS Strategic Plan.
Thank you. The Town of Drayton, the Drayton Valley and District Family and Community Support Services FCSS Strategic Plan, which was developed in 2010, expired in 2015. Therefore, the FCSS Board and staff worked together to draft a new five-year plan for 2016 to 2020. The goal was to explore the current needs of the community, to ensure that the priorities that were identified in the previous strategic plan were still relevant, and to develop strategies that will lead to the achievement of those goals. It was also important to ensure that our goals are in alignment with current municipal and provincial goals. After reviewing and revising the draft strategic plan over the course of several meetings, the FCSS Board developed the final draft of the plan on December 7th, 2015. The Drayton Valley and District FCSS Strategic Plan 2016 to 2020 is included for council's review and approval. Excuse me. Therefore, I move that council approve the Drayton Valley and District FCSS Strategic Plan for 2016 to 2020 as presented.
All right, yeah. Lola, come on up if you have any comments to make.
Thank you, Counselor Bossert. Maybe I'll just speak just a little bit to the actual goals on the plan. As mentioned, it was very, it was very timely to go through this process, since we did just go through the development of the social development plan, and it was important to not only align with our municipal plans, but also the provincial plan. The provincial FCSS overarching goal is that FCSS enhances the social well-being of individuals, families, and communities through prevention. As a way of evaluating FCSS programs on our provincial funding, the province has developed particular outcomes that we do need to report on, so it was important to make sure that we were in fact aligning with those outcomes. Those outcomes are individuals, improved social well-being of individuals, improved social well-being of families, and improved social well-being of community, and with each of those specific points under each of them. So our specific goals that we thought were a priority to our own community, based on the feedback that we got through the process of the social development plan, as well as feedback from our board, were that community members are resilient, able to overcome life's challenges, that people have a sense of belonging, of ownership, and pride in their community, that organizations are partnering and collaborating to build community capacity, and that citizens are aware of the resources available to them and how to access them. So we've developed some strategies that we think will help us to achieve those goals. We will provide opportunities for seniors, youth, and families to be actively engaged and supported to allow healthy, independent living. We'll strengthen people by developing their skills, knowledge, confidence, increase the capacity of the community to provide citizens with what they need in order to be resilient. We will identify and involve diverse populations, including families, youth, seniors, and people of different ethnicities, and will foster meaningful relationships with individuals who are on the margins or isolated. We foster community pride through local initiatives, provide opportunities for volunteer development, training, and celebration. We'll work with the community to raise awareness about community needs and finding appropriate solutions, support local groups and organizations, business and government to work collaboratively, and to promote FCSS as a referral service, provide opportunities for local service providers to showcase their resources, and to maintain a current database of community resources and make it available to the community. So we're really excited about the strategic plan. We intend to use it as a working document that will help to keep us focused on our work when it comes to prevention, there's lots of different things that we could do. So this will keep us focused, it will help our FCSS Board to allocate financial resources when it comes to our granting, and help us with our own internal allocation of resources as well. So yeah, we're proud of it, and now that it's been approved, we'll be coming up with a prettier document that will be presented to the public. Is there any questions?
Counselor Bossert?
No question, just comments. Thank you Lola for coming in and going through the very basic outline of our strategic plan, the actual document is some 30 pages long.
Yep.
And very comprehensive. I really enjoyed coming together with the rest of the board and working through the strategic plan, tweaking it where we felt it needed to be tweaked to better meet the needs and the demands and the demographics of our community. And it also helped me as a counselor and a community member to understand really what FCSS does for our community, in our community, with our community, and the fact that our overreaching goals now align very carefully with the provincial goals, but there's a trickle down how each layer feeds to the next layer above it, and I just found that it's a very comprehensive strategic plan. And now when I'm talking with people in the community, in fact, I talked to a young lady just this weekend about volunteer opportunities, this is part of our strategic plan for FCSS, and I could tell her that. So I really appreciate the work that's gone into it, and I really sense that it's going to be a foundational document for much of the work that we see unfold in our community, so thank you to the team for putting it all together.
And thank you for your participation. It wasn't an easy process, but it's definitely a worthwhile process, especially for the number of new board members such as yourself that we have, so.
All right, any other questions, comments?
I think that it's great, I think it's important to refocus ourselves sometimes. As a group, we get very set on one path, and lives and things change, and I think it's awesome that you guys are recognizing the community needs as they grow and changing with them, so, thank you.
And that's the beauty of FCSS. No FCSS program is alike. The province has given us our overarching mandate, however, each community does have the ability to tailor things to meet their own needs, and we're certainly finding that we're, especially being in Rotary House, that we're providing more of that face-to-face needs, and those needs are growing unfortunately with the economic times and such, so.
All right, then I will call to question. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. 8.2, Counselor Nado, Policies for the Early Childhood Development Center and Family Day Home Agency. Thank you Deputy Mayor.
Each year, the Childcare Operational Board presents to council for approval any new or revised policies for the Early Childhood Development Center and its Family Day Home Agency. All new or revised policies were approved by council on June 24th, 2015. The following policies that are to be removed as they are referring to the out-of-school, not scare program, out-of-school care program, which is no longer being offered at the center and hasn't been offered since 2014. The Early Childhood Development Center Distilled Supervision, Early Childhood Development Center Enrollment Before School Care, and Early Childhood Development Center Guidance OSC. Therefore, I make motion that the council rescind the following out-of-school care policies: Early Childhood Development Center Distilled Supervision, Early Childhood Development Center Enrollment For Before School Care, and Early Childhood Development Center Guidance OSC.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Perfect, call to question, all in favor? That's carried. And 8.3 is Counselor Long, signing authority?
Thank you. Just before I begin, Shandra, can you confirm, is this one motion? It's written out in two separate things, it looks like one. Awesome, thank you. As a result of the change of administration for the town, a resolution of council is required to set out the signing authorities for the municipal corporation of the Town of Drayton Valley. So I move that the signing authorities for the Town of Drayton Valley be as follows effective January 29th, 2016. The Municipal Corporation of the Town of Drayton Valley resolves that any one of the following, that's Glenn McLean, Mayor, Counselor Nicole Nado, Counselor Graham Long, Counselor Dean Schuler, Counselor Farrell Wheeler, or, sorry, Counselor Farrell Wheeler, Counselor Deborah Bossert, Counselor Brandry Frederickson, along with any one of the following from administration, that's Dwight Dibbin, CAO, Annette Dresen, Director of Community Services, Thomas Thompson, Director of Emergency Services, Ron Fraser, Director of Engineering and Development, Kevin McMillan, Assistant Director of Corporate Services, or any person designated by the CAO in writing are hereby authorized for and in the name of the corporation to draw, endorse, accept, sign, and make all or any bills of exchange, checks, promissory notes, and orders for the payment of money, and other instruments, whether negotiable or not, for deposit or collection for the credit of the corporation, only with the bankers of the corporation, and that the CAO or any person designated by the CAO in writing may arrange, settle, and certify all books and accounts between the corporation and its bankers, and sign receipts for vouchers, and with regard to documents relating to administration, the chief administrative officer or his designate will be authorized in writing to sign such instruments. Do you want to say it again?
Yeah, I think I missed that. All right, any discussion on this motion? All right, called a question, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. That is the end of our decision items. For information items, we have the RCMP stats for December 2015, the Drayton Valley Brazu Fire Services stats for November, December, and year-end 2015, and the Brazu Seniors Foundation Meeting Minutes of December 2015. Can I get a motion to adopt those for information? Counselor Long, all in favor? That's carried.
That's carried. Ten point O is department reports. We have planning and development. Shahid?
Today, there's two reports to share with you, and one is annual report, and the number two is a monthly report. So I would like to share annual report first. Next slide, please. So you can see, I mean, this bar diagram, it shows in the last year, 2015, the planning and development has approved 134 development permit, and the development value was 34,853,000. So this table also comparing the last, the current economic situation to last economic downturn, which was we have in 2008. So you can see, I mean, in 2015, we approved 134 development permit, but in 2008, we approved 191, which is 30% higher than from 2015. But if you see value of development, so in 2015, it was to 34,853,000, and in 2008, it was 30,246,706. So the number of development permit is low as compared to 2008, but the value of development is high. And one more thing, I mean, if you see this, you will notice, I mean, this bar diagram, you see, I mean, 2008 to 2013, the value of development is going up, and again, it's from 2013 to today, it's dropping down. It seems like it's a five-year cycle, 2008 to 2013, again, after 2013, again, it's dropping down. It seems like a five-year cycle. Next slide, please. This slide, you will notice, I mean, it talk about, I mean, what we have value of development in 2008, 2013, and 2015. That's a more detail, and it's breakdown value of development to industrial, residential, and commercial. So you will notice, I mean, in our value of development, industrial area is quite high as compared to 2008. So in 2008, it was 450,000, and 2015, it is 9,672,500, so which is quite high as compared to 2008. And the highest one, what we can see is in 2013, which is 12,972,636. So it shows us, I mean, still, I mean, what we have economic situation, still, we are better than what we had before in 2008. Next slide, please. And if you see, I mean, residential development 2015, so we can see, I mean, ongoing densification with old single-family dwelling being replaced by duplex. A 22-year condo was approved for River Terrace, which is located beside Valley Terrace on 47th Street. And the planning and development also approved one area structure plan, which is called Highland Park, and is totaling 53 new, totaling 53 new residential lots. Next slide, please. And if you see, I mean, the mega project institutional, commercial, and industrial development, so you can see, I mean, the bus hub was constructed at 4725 46th Street and utilized beginning of 2016. Truck stop is currently under development, and the development value was 16,606,900. And the Petrocana Sea Store, Petrocana Bulk Station, Loop City, Best Western, which is now completed and open to the public. And there's also Mr. Mike Restaurant, Solo Liquor Store. And you see other numerous commercial development. The total value of development was 14,150,000, and which include Walmart expansion, Pembina Pipeline, Wendy Restaurants, and Napa. Next slide, please. So in 2015, you can see, I mean, the new housing start, which number is 32 units. And if you compare again, in 2008, the total new housing was, start was 15. So we are almost double the what we have in 2008, and we also, I mean, facing the same economic situation what we had in 2008. That's for the annual report. And now I would like to share, I mean, the monthly report, what we have here. Since our last PND meeting report, November 19, PND has approved four development permit and four new business licenses. So four development permit includes two commercial, one residential, one institutional, which ensures commercial interior renovation, which call the Masala Grills. And number two, I mean, commercial interior renovation, Panoga Pizza. And number three, I mean, which is residential, single-family dwelling. And number four, one institutional, which is temporary portable signage, El Dorado School in relation to bus hub being moved. And there's also, as I mentioned, there are also four local business licenses, which include three new and one change of name. So that also include one Masala Grill Restaurant and Bar, number two, Riverside Construction Limited, which is construction company, and Wild Glide 2015, which is oilfield company. And the last one is, which is change of name, Mr. Mike Steakhouse Casual, which now I'm in change from Grayton Valley to this Mr. Mike Steak Casual. That's all for today, and I would like to thank you to council, administration, all staff, my all colleagues, for their great support and guidance during the 2015. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think that sounds great. Very positive. So is there any other comments or questions? Counselor Frederickson?
I just wanted to say thank you for this report. It is interesting, because I know we do talk a lot in meetings about number of permits, so it's interesting to see the dollar values attached to those numbers. And it's not necessarily quantity, but quantity of numbers doesn't dictate the value that we're looking at, which I find is interesting. I'm glad that you went all the way back to 2008, because that is one of the most recent dips or low points that we've experienced. And I would really like to see, you know, keep our eye on 2016 to see if the trend is going to continue downward, or if we're looking at a bounce back of some sort. I'm kind of interested to see how this year is going to shape up. But thank you very much for the information.
One more part I would like to add, I mean, in the last year, 2015, we approved 88 business licenses.
Counselor Bossert?
Thank you, Shahid, for this very comprehensive report. And as Counselor Frederickson mentioned, the numbers actually are very helpful to us. We see a number of items that do come to council. We see development in the community, but having it put all together in a package for us on an annual basis is very helpful. And the fact that you just mentioned we approved 88 new business licenses for 2015, to me, is very encouraging. And the final slide with the housing starts that's there on the screen, the fact that we are still seeing housing starts, that their value is still at a reasonable amount compared to our most recent downturn of 2018, or 2008, to me, is encouraging. We cannot use the number from 2013 as a go-from start, start part, starting point, because it was an exceptional time. I think the fact that we continue to see some growth, some new businesses, $14 million in new commercial, to me, that's actually very encouraging. May not be what people are used to, but the last two years have been exceptional. If we look at the, you know, the average over these last five, six, seven years, we are still just above average, really, or at average. So thank you again for the numbers and for the information.
One more point I would like to add, I mean, as I mentioned the last council meeting, that every year, according to municipal government plan, we need 35 new houses. And if you see, I mean, in 2015, we have 32, which is quite good number.
All right. Thank you very much. Engineering, transportation, and sustainability. Ron Fraser?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So in the last month, we went out for quotes for the provision of electrical services for the bus hub and the open space park. And we had six bidders, and so our plan is to accept the low bid and award the contract fairly soon here. Another item we're working on is revising minimum standards for the town, like for subdivision development. So we're working with Associated Engineering and CCE Consulting. And we've had an initial workshop, kind of at the senior management level with them, and now we're going to bring it in internal to get internal comments. Additionally, I've been working fairly closely with the county of late in terms of trying to put together some applications under the Alberta Community Partnership Grant Program. So hopefully, we'll have something going forward, and if something comes together, then I think that would be a benefit to the community. Hopefully, we get some money that would help us pay for some of our design work, so possibly some construction. I've noted that of late, there has been some issues with traffic signals. We are working with can traffic to get these resolved, as some of the loops, camera detections not working that well. So that is affecting some of the delays and signals and so forth. And there's been a few burned-out bulbs, and we're getting those fixed. As far as sustainability is concerned, Annette's continuing to work hard on the greenhouse gas and energy inventory. She's working with our consultants in Vancouver, but she's doing a lot of the legwork herself. We're also of interest, I guess, is that she's reviewing several areas that maybe we can come up with some kind of sustainability policy for the town and for facilities, but it's an early review stage, and it'll be discussed at our Sustainability Committee and council and everything before anything's ever implemented. But she's got a lot of good ideas, so. And that's pretty well concludes my report.
Sounds good. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Community services and FCSS. Annette Dreason?
Thank you very much. Quite a few things want to go. Just want to talk a little bit further about the specialized transportation. As I mentioned, we hosted a community meeting last week, and we had members from the Community Bus Association, the Cancer Support Group, from Brazo Seniors Foundation, B.I. Support Services, FCSS, the MLA's office, so good representation from the community. We had a couple who couldn't attend, so, and certainly a couple more that we will be inviting to the table, not only Sunrise Village, but Brazo County as well, too. So again, really focusing, and I think there's a lot of good motivation and interest in trying to see if we can't come up with a community-based solution to specialized transportation. So we'll continue to bring that forward. We're, of course, with the Total Works Health and Fitness Center, finalizing budget and preparing a timeline for the improvements. So we've seen some of the safer equipment come in place, so putting everything else together on the proposal that has been given the go-ahead by council. The Eleanor Pickup Arts Center, certainly under its full operation for all intents and purposes. However, there are a number of deficiencies that we're making the contractor know about, and of course, just setting up a timeline to have those deficiencies corrected. And then, of course, working with the contractor in terms of the final budget. I've already indicated to Brazo County that while we were hoping to get something by December, we won't be able to do that until the contractor is finished with his documentation. With the Early Childhood Development Center, of course, the letters have been sent off to the Ministers of Human Services and Municipal Affairs, so hoping that through our mayor, we can try to make sure that we get that meeting set up fairly soon, so that we can look at childcare issues. Capital projects, we have over, just in community services, over 10 capital projects alone, so 2016 is going to be a busy year. So trying to work with the necessary contractors and getting quotes and all the necessary preparation for those capital projects. We will have to wait on some as Brazo County is deferring and tabling allotted their decisions on the capital projects until April. Want to thank council, and of course, members of administration, for attending the Recreation Master Plan Workshop on January 18. I think we had a lot of very worthwhile discussion, some heavy questions being asked, but of course, important questions to ask. And it's certainly going to help with putting together the final draft, which we then to hope to bring out to the community and to council. Also, thanks to council for attending the facility tours of the Park Valley Pool, the Omoplex McKenzie Conference Center, and of course, the Early Childhood Development Center. It's always great to have council go through our facilities and talk about the programs that we're actually going through. And that being said, FCSS will be coming back, because I want to make sure that Lola and her staff speak to the number of different things and new initiatives that they're undertaking with FCSS. And of course, I would be amiss if I did not recognize that there's somebody in this room who is having his last official council meeting. And, yeah, who might that be? Right? So I just want to recognize Nessen for his years of service to the community and for creating just a wonderful environment of employees within the town office. I think he's been just instrumental in making it a wonderful place to build relationships with fellow employees.
Yes. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Emergency Services, Tom already presented, so we're on to administration. Legislative Services, Shandra?
I don't have a report, but I was going to speak about Nessen. I thought I'd be first. I thought I would be first. I just wanted to say that, yes, you will be very, very missed in taking on this role of legislative services and overseeing the records management. I couldn't have done it without your help and your guidance. And I don't really look forward to next week, when you won't be here, but I know that you'll have a wonderful time hanging with your grandkids and, more importantly, the cats. So you did mention last night that the people we work with are like our second family, and I do appreciate you being like a family member, too. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Economic Development, Eric Burton?
Thank you, worship. But I don't have anything to report at this time.
All right. Communications and Marketing, Tyler?
This is the second time I got it. Got to get up here? We're at 9:68, in case people are wondering. I know. I've been talking about it for forever, but we have, yeah, we're so close, Nessen. Also, we have actually been contacted by some other people that are looking to develop an app, and they're looking at us, to be able to use us as an example and to ask for feedback on our app. So that's definitely putting us on the map. I just want to say as well, thank you to Nessen. My candy dish will stay much fuller now on my desk. That's very, very good, and that's all I have for reporting.
Thank you. Information Services, as well as you're the acting C.A.O., so, Nessen?
Thank you. I have a few things to report. One is the city dashboard. You have a glimpse of the power of data and what it can do for you in terms of... You had a glimpse of the power of data and what it can do for you in terms of city fathers who have to plan for the future and know what is happening in your community. I can't say how important this project is. Tyler talked about, excuse me, the app that we have. The app will become even more significant once the dashboard is done. The last meeting that I sat in with, with the CAO and with Telus and with IBM, it's amazing what a powerhouse group we have from IBM and Telus working on this app or this dashboard. It's amazing, the quality of people. IBM has thrown the best software engineers, the best technicians, and the best administration into it. So this is going to be something that's really going to put Drayton Valley on the map once it's functional. So in that respect, I am sad I won't be here to share that experience, but I certainly will be following it with a keen eye and looking forward to making that next generation leap that this community has always made in terms of technology. We did the first one when we were early adopters of the internet and I see this as our second generation move. And I hope it only gets stronger and stronger because what I've learnt in my lifetime of working in Drayton Valley, and it is a lifetime, I've worked longer in Drayton Valley than I've worked anywhere else, so that we are all embracing of new technology, we're all embracing of new ideas, and everybody that I've worked with in this organization, past councils, past administration, present council and present administration, have been very, very encouraging towards administration to always be at the cutting edge. And we've enjoyed that. And I think that's what made working in this town and staying here to work in this town that much more exciting and valuable because of all the learning experiences we had. So that's going to be a wonderful experience. And to add to that, we are going to, we've hired a GIS person and that is a valuable asset that this town needs now. And all the information that's collected will be populated into GIS. I see more and more departments in the administration looking to GIS for information and for tools to use in their planning. So that's going to be an important one. And of course, we also, Dwight and I had a meeting with ITS and Global in planning and looking forward to the future in terms of traffic issues in town. So they will be coming forward with some new plans. By the way, two companies are merging at this point in time. So that's all I have to report, but I just wanted to take this time in saying thank you both to the present council, past councils, present administration, past administration, all the wonderful people that I've worked with. It's been very rewarding, it's been exciting, very fulfilling, and I enjoyed the challenges that I experienced as I moved through the organization. It's been the town I came to, the town I stayed in, and the town I'll always cherish because this is my town now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. On to council reports. Counselor Fredrickson?
So I don't have much to report. I did attend a conference yesterday, Coalition's Connect Conference. It is the conference that our Healthy Communities Coalition Committee, I said, attends. Their primary focus was youth and some of the terminology they use is youth getting webbed up. So they talked about the power of five and how it's important for youth to have five supporting adults in their lives in order to not, quote unquote, fall through the cracks. So they talked about the power of connections and no matter what those connections are, they can be coaches, aunts, uncles, you know, biological family, family that they find. So it was a very fun conference. It was a very active conference and I will have a report coming out of that conference. Just to follow up with Nessun, I just wanted to say that a few observations I made when I was situated in the town office during the Community Foundation was that, and I'm not trying to put words in staff mouth, but I'm sure you will be very missed, you have an excellent rapport with your staff, always joking, always. Your very genuine and genuine interest, I know my, such, me being with the Community Foundation, the town office, it was like being amongst the staff, but not really on the staff. And you did make me feel quite welcome within the town hall parameters and just taking a genuine interest in, you know, what was going on with me, but also all your other staff. So it will be a very big gap to fill and I, you know, wish you good luck on all your future endeavors.
Thank you. Counselor Nadeau?
Thank you. I had several things on the go right now in terms of economic development. We had our most recent economic development committee meeting and talking about some of the local market that's happening. We evaluated the strategic plan moving forward, approached a subject to tourism and how to move forward in that, as well as discuss the new brand development. I also am on the subcommittee for the I Am Empowered Conference, which you heard the presentation today and something I'm very much looking forward to in March for communities in bloom. This Friday is the Princess Bride Free Movie Night for families. Doors open at 6:30 at the Mackenzie Center, starts, the movie starts at 7:00 PM. There is free popcorn and free hot chocolate, so please come out. It is, especially in this economic time, it can be challenging to do things as a family. This is a free family event, so I encourage everybody to come out and participate. I also attended the Community Services Tour as well as the Recreation and Culture Planning Strategic Plan. I think we discussed a little bit on that, the community tour. I frequent all of those places often, maybe not so much the Omni Plex, but I'm working on that. In terms of the culture and rec plan, it is something that I think I'm pleased to see move forward. I do think there are some gaps, but I know we're not at the end of that yet, so hopefully we can tighten all of those up. And I've had the pleasure of being one of the members for the Legacy Project as well as with Counselor Long and Counselor Schuler. We attended a meeting last week and had someone from the museum in Stony Plain come out and talk about their initiatives, how they're dealt with it, some of the programming that they've done, and some programs and some training possibilities. The Genealogy Society is involved, the library is involved, the Legion is involved, and the Historical Society. So it's a great group. There was actually a great, great passion for this and moving forward. And I see them developing not just for this Legacy Project that we've kind of isolated, but as well as in terms of, like, a heritage council there. They're very passionate about this and want to see the ongoing, the project ongoing, as well as the preservation of what we have in our young community. And that's my report on that. And I do want to say I worked with Nessun from not knowing anything when I started. Maybe I don't know as much as I think I do now. But I have to say, I've never in that time ever seen you raise your voice, be angry. You are probably one of the most kindest souls I have ever encountered in my life and I think your presence will sorely be missed. And thank you for everything that you've done in helping a rookie counselor to become a veteran counselor with more confidence. And I know you'll be missed with the staff as well.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Bossert?
No.
Oh. I'm in. I guess we'll let you talk. Counselor Long?
I'm not the one you have to worry about. A lot of stuff's been covered already. I attended the Community Services Facilities Tour, had the Library Board later the same day. And Nessun, before I forget, your name is still well remembered there and respected and folks there are sorry to see you moving on. I can't read my own writing, so I'll skip that. The Drayton Valley Community Foundation on the 18th, the Economic Development Committee meeting on the 19th, and two days ago, Monday, the whatever day it was, the Ahad Regional Library Annual, not the annual meeting, they do an orientation once a year for folks. And if you ever get a chance to go, it's really interesting. They do a lot of stuff for $4 a head, $4 per capita. It's astonishing, great value. With that, I will leave it there except to say, Nessun, when I first started coming to these meetings 16 years ago, there was four people, there was Saran, Manny, Nessun, and Sheldon Fuson, who'd been here a long, long time and were basically the foundations of the entire organization. Nessun, of course, is the last to move on. So this is the end of an era in a lot of ways and I wish you well.
All right. Thank you. Now Counselor Bossert?
Thank you. As been mentioned, on January 12th, I attended the Community Facilities Tour and again, it's always very informative to go into our facilities and to go behind the scenes and see how things really do function and quite enjoyed that day. On January 14th, I had the opportunity to do a visit of a housing unit to see what was being built in our community. There may be further developments on that. On the 18th, the council took part in the Recreation Master Plan and I just want to mention a quote, David Huko's very first quote that he said when he came and started our workshop. He said, "The town has an abundance of recreation facilities, some may, that may be better utilized, but far more than what the communities our size generally have." So I had to agree very much with his comment that we as Drayton Valley and area are very blessed with a strong complement of recreation and culture facilities. And yes, we continue to move forward in developing new facilities and strengthening the facilities that we currently have. I found that workshop very enlightening and a great way just to connect all of the different facilities that we have in our community. Also, on the 18th of January, I attended the Chamber of Commerce AGM and congratulations to the executive there. On the 23rd, was able, was invited to the Mr. Mike's Soft Opening, so congratulations to Mr. Mike's for their new restaurant here in town. We wish them all success. On the 19th, I was invited to another resettlement meeting, this one hosted by the Anglican Church. There is a number of people in our community who are interested in initiating the efforts to bring in some refugees. It is at its very initial stages and things will develop, I will keep counsel abreast as things develop, but I think it's likely that we'll see at least one family join our community within the next six months. That's the goal, anyway. I also want to mention that tomorrow is the Poverty Simulator that's being hosted by the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Team. And United Way from Edmonton comes out and helps us to put on that Poverty Simulator. Should be a very interesting day to have a glimpse into the life of a person living on low income. Today is also the Bell Network Let's Talk Day. It focuses on mental health awareness and there was quite a lot of conversation today in council by our present presenters about mental health awareness. And it is something that we all need to keep on our radar to have a healthy and resilient community. So if you are on the Bell Network, tweet, phone, text, whatever, last year, they raised $6.1 million for mental health awareness and some of that money came directly to the Alberta Hospital for Mental Health Initiatives. And of course, the topic on our agenda today that is sad to me, and as Counselor Longed, it is an end of an era with Nessun's retirement. Of course, I've been here with the town for approximately seven years as a counselor and you have always been a calm and reassuring presence in all the scenarios and situations that council faces over the years. And I know that your future with your family, your grandchildren, your wife, is something you're very much looking forward to having more time with them. And this has been a year of transition for our council with Manny transitioning over to the CETC and with your retirement. So it feels like there are, there's definitely a change. And I just wish you and your family the very best and your retirement ahead and you will sorely be missed by your counselors and by your administration. And we thank you for all your dedicated service to the community. And that's my report.
Thank you. All right. That just leaves me. So we had a physicians' meeting and there's been a few doctors that I have been talking about continually over the last years. It takes about that long to actually get them here, but we had Dr. Fraud start at the Claro Clinic already and Dr. White is starting February 1st. So if anyone is looking for a new doctor, there are new doctors at both clinics. And then we also have Dr. Van Staden should be starting in May at Malone Clinic, too. So we do have our Physician Appreciation Dinner on February 24th. They will be hosting and getting organized for. And then we had our AgriPlex Committee Meeting just last night. We're basically ready to be finalizing the recommendations going forward to council on what, between the feasibility study and what's appropriate, and they're looking to present at a joint council meeting. So that should be coming, hopefully, this spring sometime, not exactly specific sure when. And other than that, being on all the tours, it was great. It's always nice to see what's going on in our community and especially the programs that we're able to provide and offer. I think it makes us more informed as counselors. Sometimes we're that contact for people of what's, excuse me, happening. So, yeah. And then Nessun, the time and dedication and all the different departments that you have organized has been incredible. It definitely shows your hard work and your flexibility. And we want to wish you health, happiness, and enjoyment in your retirement as you leave this legacy behind. Thank you. And with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Oh, shocker, Counselor Long. All in favor? Thank you.